The glass is on. I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, September 10th, meeting of the Currituck Planning Board. At this time, we are going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'm going to ask if there's any disqualifications on the board. Okay, hearing none. We're going to move on. We do have a quorum. Tonight, we have one, two, three, four, five, six out of seven. So we definitely have a quorum. If y'all have had a chance to look at the agenda, I'm going to entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda.
I have a motion for approval. Do I hear a second? You have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Moving on to item number five, approval of the minutes for our August 13th, 2024 meeting. If you've had a chance to look over that, please note any changes. If not, I'm going to go ahead and entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes for August 13th, 2024.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Seeing no old business, we're going to move on to new business. Item one under new business, Planning Board 2313, Grandy Village, request to rezone 13.43 acres from general business zoning district and single-family residential mainland zoning district to conditional mixed residential zoning district to allow 47 townhomes and up to 20,000 square feet of non-residential development on property owned by W. and J. Land Development LLC, or excuse me, W. and J. Land Development LLC, Pamela K. Austin, Younger, and Patricia B. Austin. The property is in Grandy at the intersection of Carritoke Highway and Poplar Branch Road. Tax map 107, parcels 51D, 51E, 53, and 54A, Poplar Branch Township. At this time, we will hear from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the board. This is a conditional rezoning request to conditional mixed residential district. You can see here, this is an overview of the property in Grandy, adjacent to the McDonald's. Sorry, getting good stuff here. And Poplar Branch Road. You can see here, everyone familiar with the property? The area? There's been a sign out there for a while. It's four parcels, and you can see they're spelled out in your staff report with a couple different owners. The request is for all of the parcels and as one development. Currently, the zoning is general business, closest to Carritoke Highway. The red is general business on this map, and the yellow is single-family residential mainland. The Imagine Currituck Future Land Use Map classifies the site as G4, the village centers, and the area around the parcel is G2, which is controlled growth. And now getting to the actual request here. The request is for conditional MXR for 47 townhomes, one- or two-story townhomes. These townhomes will be subject to the multifamily and community compatibility standards of the ordinance. I will note that this application came in, I believe it was, it was in 2023, April of 2023. There has been a change to the ordinance since then with respect to density. You may remember, and I think I've mentioned it at several meetings since, the Board of Commissioners did amend the ordinance with respect to the densities allowed in certain zoning districts. And when they amended that, they also removed these sustainable development incentives that allow for increased density of up to one dwelling unit per acre for doing things that are, help with sustainable development. And so since the application was received prior to that ordinance change, this application is subject to those development incentives, which is why you can see that the proposed overall density of the site is 3.75 dwelling units per acre. And the G4 transect of the land use plan does allow up to four dwelling units per acre if there's sewer here in the Grandy subarea of the county. I did include the ordinance language with, that was in place for sustainable development practices, where a density bonus of up to one additional dwelling unit per acre beyond the maximum allowed in the base zoning district based on the land designation in the land use plan is permitted, and they will pick from a menu of sustainable development practices, two from what's called Schedule A, and I believe it's four from Schedule B. So that will be part of the development, and will be reviewed at the major site plan phase. They can choose what, they may, they may decide to select different sustainable development incentives at the time of a site plan submittal. So just letting the board know, that's why you see that density of 3.75 here, which you do not really see anywhere else in the county. And currently, the ordinance doesn't allow up to four anymore, based on that board change in October. The applicant did provide some conceptual building elevations for the townhomes for both one and two-story, which are in your agenda packet, and I also have here in the slideshow here in a, in a moment. The request also is for up to 20,000 square feet of non-residential area. You can see towards the front of the site, there's a commercial building, says 10,000 square feet, and one behind it to the east that's between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet. In the MXR zoning district, not all business uses are permitted in that district, but any use that is allowed in MXR would be permitted in those buildings. And the development will be done in substantial conformance to the conceptual development plan, but this board may recall that recently, there were some changes made to the ordinance with respect to how you could amend a conceptual development plan, and we went through and talked about providing a little more flexibility for applicants as they're actually moving to the design phase to make changes that are needed that don't significantly impact the development and what was approved. So the, the footprints could change a little here and there, or you might see more than two buildings, you know, depending on what the ultimate design is, but overall, no more than 20,000 square foot of non-residential area. Those buildings will be subject to the non-residential design standards of the ordinance, as well as the community compatibility standards. The site is proposed for county water, and the Board of Commissioners did include the site, updated the water sewer district area in March of this year to include the subject properties in the area that's available for sewer. At this time, I don't believe that sewer allocation has been given, and there isn't a force main to this property at this time, but it is the, it is the, actually required to get this density and to get this zoning in this location, that they be on county water as well as sewer, some sort of private or public sewer. Stormwater, you can see here, they're, they are adjacent to a canal, and they also have an existing pond on the site that they're proposing to enlarge for stormwater requirements, as well as a rain garden. All the stormwater regulations will have to be met at the time of the site plan, so we will get the more detailed stormwater plans and design at that time, and make sure they meet the minimum requirements of the, the ordinance. Transportation, they're proposing an access, and this access already exists on Carritoke Highway just south of McDonald's. It's a full move to access. I feel like I should go to the podium, but I don't, I don't want to, so I'm going to stay here. So I can't really point, but you probably, you're probably familiar with the access, and you may have used it. And then also, to the, onto Poplar Branch Road there, you can see Mimosa Lane. There's a proposed access there as well, which one or more of the subject properties currently does use Mimosa Lane as an access, so. I did include, I did get school count numbers for this year from the, the schools, and based on the Tischler study, there's a, a factor for determining the number of students projected, and those are included in your agenda packet and currently in the elementary school. Currently, those schools do have capacity available. I will note that, that we track committed capacity as well, and that's something the board may want to take into account, is, you know, there, there are other lots that have been approved out there that are going to be feeding into the school system, so some of those numbers may, you know, they're available now on paper, but by the time this, these are built and the kids are ready to go to school, there could be more kids already enrolled, so we could, could have an issue with being overcapacity. Let's see. They're proposing some amenities here, which multifamily development does require active open space, and it requires a percentage to have active recreation features. They're proposing a beach amenity, which is actually adjacent to the pond, picnic area, which is between the two parking lots. It's the white area adjacent to the walkway and the observation deck. Multi-use path along the highway, as well as within the subdivision, there's walkways and pedestrian paths, a wildlife observation deck, and a boardwalk, as well as a tot lot. And then they are proposing a 50-foot vegetated buffer adjacent to the existing residential dwellings to the north and to the west. As I mentioned before, here are the, the elevations that were submitted as part of the rezoning request. This is the elevation for the two-story townhome. There's also a rendering for a three-story townhome. Any questions on the plan before I move into land use plan consistency?
Were they planning on building a three-story, or just a one or two, like you mentioned?
A mix of two or three-story. Yeah. They haven't determined exactly what mix that will be. You ready to move to land use plan?
Yeah. Are you done?
Well, I'm going to go into land use plan consistency.
Yeah, that's fine. I did one question. You said there's going to be sidewalks along 158?
Yes.
Is that the red that?
It's right by the red, between the red and the road, there's a, a yellowish color there.
Okay, so that's going to be?
And that's the same color as the internal walkways are.
Kind of in between the Hardee's and the McDonald's, that, that, that stretch right there?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. At, at the property lines of this development. They won't be required to go beyond the property line.
Yep. Any, any questions for Jenny on, on any of these specifics?
On the site plan? All right, let's go to, so the, the land use plan, as I previously showed you, does classify the site as G4 Village Center, and that classification is characterized by compact street network, well-developed pedestrian network, and readily available water or wastewater. Appropriate land uses are mixed residential and commercial uses, and medium to high density residential densities and commercial uses are encouraged to locate within the G4 transect where both water and wastewater are available. These land use plan goals and policies are in your agenda packet. Land use goal one, you see a lot, encourage development to a current densities appropriate for their location. The future land use map is a guide and not the sole basis for land use decisions. You're, you're probably pretty familiar with most of those land use policies. There's some infrastructure and county services policies that may apply. Ensure the sufficient provision of services to support associated growth and development, and continue to enforce, to enforce the adequate public facilities ordinance. Policy 1.1, the cost of infrastructure, facilities, and services related to demand created by new growth and development shall be borne in equitable proportion by those creating the additional demand. New development shall connect to the county's water system at the expense of the developer. Improve stormwater management and mitigation. Continue to enforce adequate public facilities ordinance to ensure sufficient school capacity. Ensure public services remain at a sufficient level to provide superior service to the growing county population. Pedestrian accessways should be constructed. Environment policies are generally related to protecting the sensitive and significant lands. Parks and Rec policies are related to providing some recreation offerings and water access. Then, these are some statements that you may not have seen as much from the land use plan, but there's a community vision statement of the land use plan, that new development offers a wide range of housing choices and is compatible with its surroundings by providing connectivity between neighborhoods and amenities such as walkways and water access. The county maintains appropriate development densities and discourages encroachment in areas that impact natural assets. Development occurs in areas adequately served by county infrastructure, or occurs concurrently with planned infrastructure improvements. And then guiding principles. This is a, a list of 10, I believe there were 10 guiding principles of the land use plan. Economic prosperity and resilience cultivate a diverse economy that encourages the growth of traditional sectors while fostering new opportunities for nature-based recreation, tourism, and spa business growth. Provide a range of housing types and land development densities appropriate for attracting quality, environmentally compatible businesses and industries that strengthen the county tax base. I know this board is familiar with these conditional rezoning review standards. These are found in your staff report, along with some staff commentary. In making a recommendation, you may also notice added a, a little bit more information related to decisions that are made by this body as well, and how they're made, and what's required for the planning board to consider. So just make sure that you're considering the plan consistency and any other matters that you deem appropriate when making your recommendation to the, the Board of Commissioners. Suggested consistency and reasonable statement for this particular application is that the request is in conformance with the land use plan, including the G4 transect, and the board may determine that the request is reasonable and in the public interest by determining the size and location of the property is appropriate for the proposed use, and the request provides a needed, needed housing alternative in the Grandy area, subarea of Lower Currituck. And the technical review committee recommends conditional approval of the request, that the proposed conditions shall become conditions of approval, and development of the property shall conform to the approved conceptual development plan. Certainly, that conceptual development plan would be able to be modified in accordance with the recent changes to conditional rezoning that were adopted, so. But it, but in general, it will be in conformance with the conceptual development plan that's provided by the applicant. Conditions of approval that were sent to the applicant prior to the meeting and in the staff report are here listed as one through eight, that the townhome design shall be substantially similar to the conceptual elevations provided. A maximum of 47 two-story or three-story townhomes are permitted. A 50-foot wide vegetated buffer will be provided. As part of the major site plan or townhome development approval, the applicant shall implement the sustainable development practices. A maximum of 20,000 square feet of non-residential floor area. And then they did propose some phasing, but, but not necessarily timelines for the phasing. They're wanting to be more market-driven with, with those phasing, with the phasing of the development. Phase one will include the first 18 townhomes, the BMP, which means the pond and the stormwater control, the picnic area, the cluster mailbox unit, trash enclosure, and multi-use path adjacent to the highway. Phase two is 16 townhomes, the beach amenity, the wildlife observation deck, and the boardwalk. And phase three is 13 townhomes and the tot lot amenity. And I would be happy to answer any questions of the board at this time.
And any questions for Jenny from the board? This rezoning came to us earlier, didn't it? But it was, didn't we approve it? I think you gave a date of about two years ago, possibly?
It was, it was, it was.
Maybe not that long.
It was submitted in April of 2023.
Okay.
But I'm not aware that it came to this board.
Okay. I know we did, we did vote on something. I think it, we did something in Grandy behind the McDonald's.
There was a text amendment related to this, related to the MXR district, where the applicants were coming in, and they wanted some larger commercial buildings, where MXR, it was limited, I believe, to 2,500 square feet, and maybe 5,000, and, and that was bumped to 10,000, which is why you see that front building of 10,000. So they did come through, and you probably saw a plan very similar to this, but that was a text amendment that applies countywide, not specific to this development.
Okay. So there's two counties, I want to make sure I understand on the county sewage systems down in the Grandy area. You've got Walnut Island, which is a county sewage system. Is that correct?
It's, yeah, it's Waterside Service District.
And that's what, so that, that, that does, Waterside Villages and Walnut Island, that sewage system services those two areas?
Yes.
Okay. And it's gonna, this is going to piggyback onto that capacity?
Yes, and I don't have that, I apologize, but on page 47 of your agenda packet, it shows the service area.
Okay.
For this, this sewer. And the reason I called it Waterside Sewer, Waterside Wastewater, is because of the, the resolution.
Okay.
That, that amended that service area back in March.
Okay, so these will be, will tap into, to basically county sewage, county sewage systems?
That's the intent, yes.
Do you know, when we look at, when we looked at the plat of the subdivision, what percentage is open area of the entire?
Of this?
Of this subdivision?
So it won't be a subdivision, most likely.
Or of the development.
It'll be a major site plan.
Yeah.
Yes, and.
It looks like it's a fairly large percentage.
Yeah, it's, it is. It's, and I don't have the, the exhibit in the PowerPoint, but it is in your agenda packet. Let me get there. It's probably going to be small.
Yeah.
Probably going to need better readers.
I can never find those things.
So.
It's in there somewhere, I'm sure.
Open space is, more than 10% of open space is provided for the, this is on page 15 of the packet, but it's not going to have a number at the bottom.
Okay.
It's one of the plan pages. It's blue and red.
Okay.
So they're required to have 10% open space in the commercial area of the site, which is .31 acres. They're proposing .68, or I believe it's .68.
Okay.
Could be .58. For the multifamily, they're required to have 35% open space. 3.3 acres are required, 4.02 acres are proposed.
Okay.
And in the MXR zoning district, there's minimum, those are the minimum open space requirements. They'll, they will, DOT will see the major site plan when it comes through. I'm not sure if they are going to have any comments on, on it, and we haven't, they actually got the, this plan through our TRC submittal, but I don't believe they made any comments. Let me check. And, and Mr. Bissell may be able to speak to that when he, when it's his turn, on behalf of the applicant. No, through TRC, we didn't receive any comments from DOT.
Mimosa Lane dunks right on.
Poplar Branch.
Poplar Branch, and then you have the light up there.
Mm-hmm.
Any more questions for staff? Okay. At this time, anyone that signed up to speak, or the applicant, can come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Bissell, 3512 North Crowe Town Highway in Kitty Hawk.
Yeah, do you have the clicker? Or you can use the mouse, it's fine.
There we go. Jenny put together such a good PowerPoint presentation, I didn't bring a separate one. Just borrow hers for a couple of minutes. So, just talking about the site, I think, we're getting 47 units. It's, as Jenny said, G4, which is Village Center. This is, which calls for mixed use and a walkable neighborhood, and that's exactly what's being proposed here. So we think this is really kind of a, an ideal use of this site. It's really kind of a infill development that, that completes this part of Grandy. It is across from commercial, we're actually downzoning the front part of it, so for less intense commercial uses. You did, as was discussed earlier, adopted an amendment last year that would allow a 10,000 square foot building to be in the zoning district, and what we are actually hoping to do is to bring in a pharmacy and medical offices on that front part. They haven't committed yet, but the talks are, are ongoing. Before I get into the conditional rezoning standards, do y'all have any questions about the site plan that I can answer? By the way, I should also mention that a couple of members of the development team are here. Jim Braithwaite and Matt Price are here. And if there are any questions that you have regarding anything that I can't answer, I might call on them. might call on them.
I just wanted your boardwalk section. Your plan on making that way, I notice an amicable canal is that plan being like accessible by boots, or just like a boardwalk for the community?
Well, really just a boardwalk for the community right now. And we had two community meetings, and one of the comments that we heard over and over again was, we don't want you to improve the canal and increase boat traffic through here. People, other than that, were generally supportive of the project. We have tried to provide a good buffer to single-family development. And of course, we're leaving a vegetated buffer in here. We've got a good canvas setback and buffer along the canal that's being honored.
Quick question, Mr. Bissell. The canal, we want to make sure we understand that goes out to the sound, because we're seeing the blue on here and we're thinking, oh, that's the canal. But the canal, if I'm looking at this on page twelve of one hundred and fifteen, I think the canal, is it right up at that point of the development, right here? Can y'all see what I'm pointing at? I'm just trying to...
Here, go to the context map here.
From the road right there.
Here, Mark.
Yeah, yeah, up at that. Is that where the canal starts, right at the upper right-hand part of the development?
Kind of the north east.
Pretty much, it's almost the highway.
Yeah. It really starts at the highway. It does, okay.
And the site, it goes about another hundred percent past, you know, that land past the site before it actually opens up in town.
But it really opens up there at the top.
Right.
Okay.
Because you can't see it anywhere else other than the top.
Yeah, it's hard to see it, but you can see it here.
It's not natural by the highway, though. It's pretty much a little glorified ditch at best.
So once you get to the top, then you can get a boat out and go on out to the water and to the sound, okay? Sorry, I just...
Let me get off to you.
And, you know, I think it'll be attractive. The architecture that's being proposed, I think, is gonna be attractive and compatible with the community. Any other questions about the plan itself?
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Bissell?
Let me just run through a few things on the zoning standards. You know, it is consistent with the county adopted plans, of course, with the G-four And it's not in conflict with any UDO provision. And of course, we'll apply for site-specific plan approval at the next stage. We believe that it is needed due to changed conditions, increasing population, the cost of single-family detached housing. Alternatives are needed, so it addresses what we believe is a demonstrated community need. We believe it's compatible with the surrounding land uses. We are, as I said, providing buffering and actually downzoning the front part of the site. Doesn't adversely impact any nearby lands. It's, we believe, a logical and orderly development pattern, and will be adequately served by public utilities. As Jenny mentioned, the county commissioners did specifically amend the sewer district to include this property in the Waterside Villages sewer district. And that was one of the things that was done when the county agreed to take over that facility. First, it was oversized in order to solve the problem at Walnut Island, but then also to serve potential future development off of the one-fifty-eight corridor there. And we believe it's in the public interest and in harmony with the purpose and intent of the UDO. But it appears to be very appropriate and support the economic and community goals that Jenny outlined in her presentation. And so we ask for your approval. Be glad to answer any other questions.
Any questions for Mr. Bissell? Thanks, Mark. Any discussion on the board, with the board discussing this, or any more questions for I do have a general question, though. When we go back, I know the ordinances, we had an adequate facility statement in the UDO at one time. It dealt with schools and, you know, we could argue safety, EMS, sheriff, it's pretty general. That was changed where the only facilities we can consider as regards to the UDO were schools. But now I'm seeing...
Not exactly, yeah.
The Imagine Curry Tuck Vision Plan, the 2040 that we went over, that does note facilities in there.
It does, and I think the difference is that there are two different types of hearings. There's this legislative hearing, which this board hears only legislative matters. And then the Board of Commissioners hears legislative hearings as well as special use permits.
Okay.
And so when it comes to the standard that was required to be met through a special use permit evidentiary hearing, that language was changed from adequate public facilities to specifically adequate public school facilities.
Right.
So for any project or application that required a special use permit, then that finding would have to be made by the Board of Commissioners based on evidence taken in under sworn testimony during that hearing. Now, you can't... These review standard for zoning map amendment, including this conditional rezoning, you can see in your staff report, page nine, it says that the board may weigh the relevance and consider whether and the extent to which this amendment is consistent with these eleven standards.
Right.
And so number nine says that it would result in development that's adequately served by public facilities, streets, water, sewer, stormwater, solid waste and disposal, schools, parks, police, and fire and EMS.
Okay. Okay, so the language is in there, it's just in a different... It just applies a different...
Correct. And the way in which you must prove that is different, you know, with a legislative hearing versus evidentiary hearing.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted some clarification on that. Thank you. All right.
May I make just a general comment?
Sure.
I think this is an excellent idea for Grandy. I happen to have a real estate business in Grandy quite a number of years ago, and it was a disaster. Just in view of this upcoming meeting, I drove around Grandy this past weekend, and from my own information, and was really disappointed to see that it hasn't changed all that much. There are still people living in homemade trailers, for goodness sake. And this is a definite, will be a definite improvement for Grandy, a step up, which I certainly welcome. I'm pleased to see that we'll include the potential for some commercial property and be these townhomes available for sale or for rent. It's finally, finally, something in the county that people can... So many people can afford to rent or buy. So taking two steps back and taking that overview of the project, I think it's excellent. Highly commendable. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments?
I was just curious about some... How is the canal implemented in this? It's not at all, is it? It just kind of butts up against the property and that's the end of it.
It's a visual amenity.
Okay. That seems a shame, doesn't it? Yeah. But is that because of the buffer that has to be there? It does not... Or does the property not touch the canal?
Oh, it touches it.
It does, and there's actually a dock.
I want to offer the mic, Mark.
You could bring a boat in there if you...
It's pretty shallow.
Duck hunters use it.
Well, after you use it a little while, it's not as shallow anymore. There's actually a...
It's prop dredging.
There's a little dock right here that I think has been used in the past.
Right there, that's a dock.
They use the boat basin to...
You got such a nice development there, it just seems a shame that you can't implement that into it somehow.
I think it would be great to have it, but...
You know...
It was just a general...
Maybe something that could be addressed later on, once it gets... I was interested in one of the properties until I found out you can't use the canal.
Would it be worth adding a condition of future improvement for boat access would be permitted?
That it would be permitted, yeah.
You could have boat access now, but at our earlier meeting we had, I think a lot of people in the area supported it because they knew it wasn't gonna be a lot of boat traffic going in and out. I mean, right now, there's just duck hunters going in and out of there, so they do use it, but...
Right. It's just hard to rectify, like Mr. Hurley's saying, the policies of the county of improving water access and having a project like this with water access, but not...
You'd probably have to dredge it up, get all necessary permits to do that, which could be costly and time-consuming.
You could probably put a kayak in there now.
Sure. I know you could put a kayak in there.
The duck hunters are getting in and out. They're using props. And I guarantee you, after enough props hit that thing, it widens itself a little bit.
You open to a condition?
I mean, they take boats.
I wouldn't mind looking at it at a later point, but I don't want to be subject to another condition.
I think she's just saying the condition would be that it would be allowed as a future addition.
Yes, I just don't want to turn it into a marina because, like I say, people close by have supported it, knowing it's not gonna be a marina-type concept or anything of that nature.
Interesting. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, any more discussion? All right, hearing none. I'm gonna entertain a motion.
Motion. Move to approve PB 2313, Grandy Village, conditional rezoning because the request is in conformance with general purpose and intent of unified development ordinance and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Curry Tuck 2040 Vision Plan, including land use goal one and G-four Village Center transit. And is reasonable and in public interest. Does the rest of that need to go on there?
Yeah, yeah, where you go to the size.
Size and location of the property is appropriate for the proposed use, and the request provides a needed housing alternative in Grandy subarea of Lower Curry Tuck.
And then include the conditions for approval where you... The TRC review comments and applicants, yeah, include that in the motion.
Include any conditions of approval for TRC review, comments, and applicants agreed upon conditions of approval, and the staff report shall become conditions of approval.
Okay. Got a motion on the floor? Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose likewise.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item two under new business. Planning Board 2419, Flora Farm C-MXR. Request for an amended conditional rezoning to remove conditional general business zoning district and amend conditional mixed residential zoning districts for two-hundred-and-twenty-four point-one-eight acres to add up to two-hundred-and-fifty-two multifamily units, modify the commercial parcel configuration, and construct a roundabout at Survey Road. The application will result in overall density of two-point-four-nine dwelling units per acre. The request will amend the Imagine Curry Tuck 2040 Vision Plan Future Land Use Map from G-two to G-three. The property is located on Survey Road, tax map fifteen, parcel eighty-five D and eighty-five E, Moayak Township. This time, we'll hear from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Here's an aerial view of the site that is the subject of this matter before you, a conditional rezoning application. The property is the Flora Farm, as well as a twenty-two-acre piece of property that was zoned commercial. I'm gonna go to the podium just for a second. So this property here, and the little giblet out here in between Survey Road and the highway is part of the Flora Farm. The conditional mixed residential zoning district was approved a couple of years ago. The date's in the staff report. And then this is the twenty-two-acre parcel that you saw an application for, for the shopping center, and there was a conditional rezoning, conditional general business zoning approved for this site. You know, the Foss development is here, it's currently being built, and the Moayak Middle School is here, Lakeview and Eagle Creek, ranchland to the south, Foss Estates here. The property is, like I just said, it's currently zoned conditional mixed residential, subject to the Flora master plan, and then this piece of property is conditional general business, subject to the approved plan, the conceptual development plan that was submitted for the... It was called Flora Commercial. The site is designated... The front portion of the site is designated G-three. I'll give you a little bit of history about the land use plan designation for this commercial site in a few minutes, and then the rest of the Flora Farm site is currently zoned G-two, or not zoned, designated as G-two in the Imagine Curry Tuck 2040 Vision Plan. G-two is controlled growth, G-three is mixed-use centers and corridors. The Moayak Small Area Plan, it is within the Small Area Plan boundary. Here's the map for the Moayak Small Area Plan. You can see the front portion of the site is full service, designated full service by that plan, the rear is limited service. Okay, I'm gonna go back. This was the original master plan that was approved for the Flora conditional mixed Was approved on March first, 2021. Two-hundred-and-two-point-four-four acres, allow for two-hundred-and-seventy-seven single-family dwelling lots and up to seven-five-hundred square feet of neighborhood commercial units and associated amenities. Then this was the twenty-one-point-nine-nine-acre tract, the zoning that was approved for the anchor grocery store and a shopping center. As I stated in the staff report, the applicant has indicated the shopping center project is prospective for a different location that already has existing general business zoning in this vicinity of Survey Road. So here's the request before you. It really pertains mostly to the front portion of the site. Before I get into the request, though, I'll just give a little bit of history, because I like to do that. The ordinance was amended in this year. I'm not sure exactly what month this year, but was pertaining to the mixed residential zoning district. And prior to the amendment, the mixed residential district designated densities for different use types, and those densities varied. So non-residential was up to two, a maximum of two. Single-family was a maximum of two, and then multifamily, you could get up to three dwelling units per acre. That amendment allowed that conditional MXR developments with central wastewater and county water supply that include a mix of multifamily and single-family dwellings, that the overall maximum gross density may be increased to three dwelling units per acre based on the total land area of the district. And that's excluding the wetlands, because the wetlands was recently removed from density calculation. So this project is excluding wetlands from the density calcs. And so basically, that text amendment... And so basically, that text amendment allows this particular project to come back in and, and rezone and basically incorporate this 22 acre parcel into the Flora Farm. And the density will, will be based on the entire Flora project. So their overall density will be based on the total land area. This is similar to like a planned unit development in Corolla where there's a maximum density for the overall land area. So this particular project will retain the existing conditional zoning approval for 277 single family residential lots. There's a proposed configuration to the traffic pattern adjacent to Survey Road, or at Survey Road actually, and, and Currituck Highway, which will slightly modify the parcel boundaries for the commercial. You can see here, this is the, the project area where this request is, is requesting the additional density for multifamily units up to 252 garden apartments. My understanding is garden apartments are, are smaller apartments. These apartments will be subject to the multifamily design standards of the ordinance. The applicant did submit a conceptual to building design and some details regarding the building design elements that I'll get to in a moment. The request continues to include up to 7,500 square feet of non-residential. Again, these uses are limited to those allowed in the MXR zoning district. And those developments, development of the commercial area will be subject to the non-residential design standards of the ordinance. This is just, thought you might want to see a comparison of the way Survey Road looks now and the proposed roundabout. According to the applicant, DOT has, I think, reviewed it, done a preliminary review of the, the roundabout. And also, the applicant did provide a traffic impact analysis, an updated traffic impact analysis that was done when they came in for the shopping center conditional general business zoning that indicates that the traffic impacts for this multifamily project will be less than that was, that was proposed for the shopping center project. Let's see. The project will be on county water. It'll be served by Eagle Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant, which is private sewer. There was a note in your staff report related to the Eagle Creek plant that has been under violation and is currently under a moratorium. We did receive correspondence from the state, David May, on August 13th. Indicates the progress continues to be made with getting the plant back in shape. And I believe the applicant has additional updates from the operator that he can share with you this evening. The, the subdivision portion of Flora has received preliminary plat approval and construction drawing approval for some phases already. So some of the storm order has been designed. You can see for the addition of the multifamily units there, there are some ponds proposed to manage any additional storm order that needs to be managed based on this project. One other thing that's a little unusual. The ordinance limits lot coverage for multifamily projects to 40% for the multifamily portion of development. So the applicant is going to amend the parcel logins for this project. And I'll just show you if you follow along here on the screen. So here's the property that, that exists currently. And then to try to, to meet the requirement for the max lot coverage, they're including this sliver of open space along the back of the subdivision as well as this area. So there will most likely be a recom, recomination plat recorded prior to submittal of a major site plan for this development. This development will be a major site plan and will not go back before a board. You know, reason being is because this is, it's, the request really is almost like a retrofit of an existing design. And so that's, that's how they were trying to make the, that portion of the project work and with the way the ordinance currently requires, you know, 40% max lot coverage for this type of project. I did include some student generation rates from the Tischler Study for the all other housing types. Those are included in your agenda packet. I did make a note that current capacity is not available for the elementary school. But the Tulsa Creek School is projected to be completed October 25th, 24th, 2025. Not sure when it will open for students. This project does propose a phasing of the first CO for multifamily as July of 2026. The multifamily portion does propose amenities, including a clubhouse in the center where the, the boulevard comes in in the middle. There's a clubhouse in the center, pool, playground, ga, several game lawns and pavil, grill pavilions, a dog park, and internal and external pedestrian circulation. These are the elevations, conceptual elevations that were provided by the applicant that are also in your packet. Again, the multifamily, these will meet the multifamily design standards and will be designed in substantial conformance to these elevations as well as the additional design standards that were proposed by the applicant. Okay, I'll do kind of like I did with Grandy Village and go back to the plan and ask if you have any questions on the plan before I get into land use plan and, and small area plan consistency.
Any, any questions for staff on the, the plan?
Okay. So the mo, this property is within the Moyac Small Area Plan boundary. As I mentioned earlier, the front portion is full service, which is full service designations are focal points in the community where high amounts of activity occur. And full service designations of the Moyac Small Area Plan, a broad range of infrastructure and service investments are or will be made available by the public or private sectors. Encouraged, activity centers are located in these full service designations. The rear area, the limited service designation are less intensely developed than full service. Emphasis is more on residential development and densities. Limited service designations provide for limited availability to infrastructure and services and low to moderate residential densities. So I did an exercise in density, maximum density based off of the Moyac Small Area Plan. In prior rezoning decisions, the board has used discretion to determine whether to place more emphasis or importance on the land use plan or an adopted plan specific to a small area. So based on the existing designations of the Moyac Small Area Plan, approximately 95 acres of the site is within the full service designation. The plan allows for up to three dwelling units per acre, which would be 285 dwelling units. The rear limited service portion of the site is approximately 130 acres. The limited service area of the Moyac Small Area Plan allows up to 1.5 dwelling units per acre, which is 195. So the approximate total maximum density based on the Moyac Small Area Plan is 480 units. Not per acre, that's a mistake. But 400, 480 units total. Okay. So the Imagine Currytuck 2040 Vision Plan. So I, I mentioned earlier in the presentation that I would speak about the land use plan designations a little more detail. And so with the conditional rezoning, there's North Carolina General Statute that says that if a board makes a rezoning decision that's inconsistent with the land use plan, then it amends the land use plan, the future land use map. So when that 22 acre portion was designated as conditional general business, that decision amended the plan. And that has not been officially done with the KAMA office yet. So, but in looking at this application, it makes sense to view the site as if it has this portion of G3 on the site. So you can see, the G2 classification is for medium density residential developments and neighborhood scale commercial nodes. And is characterized by available water or wastewater in walkable neighborhoods. The G3 classification is supported by major transportation networks, public water and wastewater, and a community greenway system that links neighborhoods to mixed use areas. So the maximum density for the current designations of the Imagine Currytuck 2040 Vision Plan of the site is about 24 and a half acres as G3, which the land use plan allows three dwelling units per acre. So it's 73 dwelling units. And that, and that's in the MXR zoning district. So it's a max of three in MXR. And then approximately 130 acres designated G2, which is 100, 100 and. What happened here? Yeah, sorry. It's, which is. Did I do the math wrong there? It's got to be more than 130 acres. It's 199.5. Did you see that mark? So it's, if 24.5 acres of the site is designated as G3, which would be the parcel that you're seeing as G3, as well as the giblet across Survey Road, and the site is 224 acres approximately, then it would be 195, or 199.5 acres as G2, which is 399 dwelling units. So this number, this 130 is a, is a mistake. I'll have to correct that. So that's approximately 472 dwelling units per acre based on the future land use map. Any questions about that? So I've kind of bungled the math there. All right. So, so that's with the land use plan as it currently exists. The map as it currently exists is a maximum of 472 dwelling units per acre. The maximum density permitted with a change to the future land use map from G2 to G3 for the entire project area would be 224 acres by, times three, which is 672 dwelling units. And the request for this particular property is 277 single family dwellings and 252 multifamily dwellings for 529 total dwelling units. So there are policies of the land use plan that may apply to this request. Land use plan goals and policies, or land use policies and goals. Infrastructure and county services goals and policies, transportation policies, environment goals and policies, parks and rec goals and policies. General Northern Mainland land use po, policies foster growth and development while maintaining the distinctive natural environment and rural character of the community. General Northern Mainland Land Use Policy 1.2 encourage attractive vibrant and walkable communities that support a variety of businesses and recreational activities. Moyac Land Use Policy 2.1 properly manage the increased urban level of growth in Moyac. Policy 2.2 encourage clustered housing developments to preserve the nat, natural environment and rural character. The Northern Mainland transect profiles for G2 control growth is that the area is best suited for medium density transitional subdivisions. And that for G3 mixed use centers and corridors, appropriate uses include attractive mixed use developments and multi-story buildings that comply with design standards. And village subdivisions that provide a variety of housing types, density shall be established in existing and future civic master plans. These are similar, these, these statements are the same I read for the prior rezoning, which was Grandy Village and it was a multifamily project. Those apply potentially to this project. The board may consider these conditional rezoning review standards when determining whether to recommend approval and, and whether to recommend a set density or to recommend approval of the request as presented. And the board may determine that the request is reasonable and in the public interest by determining that the size and location of the property is appropriate for the proposed use. And the request provides a needed housing alternative in the Moyac Subarea of the Northern Mainland. The technical review committee does recommend conditional approval of the request, but also would like the board to make the decision as to whether the 252 multifamily dwelling units are approved and, and that that proposed density is appropriate and consistent with the land use plan and established provisions for the area. That particular decision will amend the future land use map. Or if the board determines that the proposed density should be reduced to be consistent with the current designations, then the maximum density should be determined by the board. The TRC suggests that the previous conditions of approval shall remain for the, for the Flora conditional MXR. Proposed conditions below shall become conditions of approval and development of the property shall conform to the approved conceptual development plan slash master plan. The proposed conditions related to the multifamily development are here, maximum of 252 units. Arranged generally as shown on the conceptual development plan, that the clubhouse, pool, playground will be constructed with a first phase of development. Game lawns, grill pavilions, and dog park amenities will be installed in proportion to the construction of additional buildings. The multifamily buildings will be constructed in substantial conformance with the submitted building elevations and descriptions provided. And then there's some phasing dates for the, the multifamily buildings. I'd be happy to answer any additional ques, questions the board has at this time.
Okay, any, any questions for staff?
I just want to make sure I, I understand kind of a timeline on, on. We, we appro, Foss got approved and then Flora was up for approval. That was, and then that was the time when Eagle Creek was having major problems with their sewage system. When, when Flora came up in front of this board. Ben Stikelether got in front of this board and basically put, for all intents and purposes, said that we needed to get a major utility designation for the Eagle Creek Sewage System. Because with a major utility designation, the state had, or the, the regulatory powers that be actually had some authority over the maintenance of that sewage system. This board approved the Flora property for 277 single family units. There was commercial tracks within that. And there was talk back and forth that, you know, Harris Teeter was coming, Harris Teeter had a pharmacy. We even saw some renderings that showed pharmacy on the storefront. Then we heard a Publix and then so on and so forth. So now that commercial track that was supposed to be part of Flora now is being a, a residential track of multifamily is being proposed. Whereas the commercial tracks are being pushed into some other area for shopping centers or grocery stores or a grocery store. I just want to make sure this board is clear on the history of Flora track. Because it was at one time 277 units with commercial development. And now that, now it, it seems that it's up to over 500 and some units. And the commercial development is no, has been min, I think there is still some commercial development here, but minimal compared to what we originally had.
Well, so originally Flora was the 277.
Right.
Family lot, single family lots, as well as up to 7,500 square feet of non-residential. That was Flora Farm.
Right, okay.
Flora Commercial was a subsequent rezoning to conditional general business.
Okay.
So it wasn't all done at the same time. It was a separate request.
Okay.
Right? And so my understanding is that the shopping center project has moved in the similar area, most likely. The applicant can provide updates if they have those. And that this particular project, that's why they came in to request that the MXR text amendment be done so they could try to do a multifamily project on. amendment be done, so they could try to do a multifamily project on this property.
Okay, okay.
And, and so that was, the Flora Commercial was going to be served by Eagle Creek, and this project will as well.
Multifamily is, as well, okay.
I can speak more to the commercial. If you want more information of what, why it changed and where it will be happening.
Okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll get you on up here.
Okay.
Any, any more questions for, for staff?
I, I had a question for you. How was, how does the Eagle Creek Sewage Dilemma affect this?
Well, they're working on it.
Well, they, they won't be able to get any approvals until they have
Until, so they're still
The ability to, to have capacity and connect, yeah.
Yeah. They're still a moratorium, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Supposedly.
Yeah. Okay. Any, any more questions for staff? Okay. At this time, hear none. Anybody who wants to come forward, either the applicant or someone that has signed up to speak, come on forward and give me your name and address.
Mark Bissel, 3512 North Croatan Highway, Kitty Hawk. We should probably just start with the wastewater situation and hit that head-on. So I received a memo from the new owner of that facility just a couple days ago with report on, on what's been done and what's being done. So the moratorium that's in place was actually put in place on the previous owner before the new owner took ownership of it. And of course, that, that transition drug on due to a number of issues between the original Sandler Utility Company and the Utilities Commission and DEQ. So ownership transferred at the end of March, and Kuratac Water and Sewer took it over, and they are now putting millions of dollars into that facility because they're, they have the financing to, to do it now that they own it. So there were a number of things that were required, upgrades were required by DEQ, and I think those are largely completed. They include things like removing vegetation and trees from the irrigation and infiltration ponds, replacing the traveling bridge filter with a, with a newer type of, of filter. And that has actually, that, that was the biggest one of DEQ, and those filters have been installed and are currently undergoing testing. To replace, to upgrade the irrigation system, and the irrigation heads have all been replaced, and they have ordered a new irrigation pump station. And they are just awaiting delivery of that, repairing the small clarifier, and that's been completed. In addition to those things, they have upgraded the blowers, not a requirement. They have installed additional UV disinfection, and they've repaired the building. And then long-term, these are short-term improvements. Long-term, they are in the process of installing additional disposal capacity, which will be at the FOST development, and, and doing some, and then drainage improvements to help with the off-site drainage, which will help the, the irrigation system. The collection system is also undergoing improvements. They have completed the replacement of non-functioning mainline valves. They have installed, they have obtained spare vacuum pumps and sewage pumps, along with spare controllers and valves. And those are the short-term improvements. Long-term improvements, they have completed the pedestal installation that was started by Sandler. They have got their 80% complete with the new monitoring system. 80% complete with installing, upgrading all controllers and valves to a more modern style of control, controller and valve that's being, being provided by Flow Vac. They are in the process of replacing the vacuum station. That delivery is expected in December. And they'll be cleaning out the, the vacuum tank at that time, which is a DEQ requirement. They have completed the replacement of the pits that were in a state of disrepair. They have installed new ejector stations, and they have a, a vacuum truck that is now maintained on-site for ongoing operations and repairs, so they can respond to situations quickly. At the community meeting, there was a, a member of the Eagle Creek Sewer Committee who was there, who had, actually had very nice things to say. She's been to all of the meetings, but at this meeting she had nice things to say about what was being done over The plant had an original design of 350,000 gallons a day. Eagle Creek only uses about 60 of that. And with the current additions, at FOST, I think it's up to a peak of about 90. So there's still only just over 25% of the capacity of that plant. And when these improvements are in place, that plant actually will have a, an operating capacity of 350,000 gallons. So there is plenty of capacity to serve this as well as other projects. Any questions about?
It's still gonna be a vacuum system, right? It's still gonna, the, it's still gonna be a vacuum.
That's my understanding.
Does not change, okay.
They explored a lot of several different options, but then I think it was just prohibitively expensive and disruptive to the community to Try to install a whole new piping network.
Right, yeah.
But the technology's come a long way in the last 25 years.
Any, any questions for Mr. Bissel? Anyone else?
Yeah.
Still going, okay.
That was really just the first
That was a long pause, Sean. That was a long pause, yeah.
So, so as you can see here, we've got a, a very strong amenity package, and, and the amenity package is, is front-loaded. So, you know, the clubhouse and the swimming pool, and a lot of the other amenities are being installed with the first phase right up front. We've got a lot of these, we've got cookout areas, and we've got an outdoor venue. We've got a lot of lawn game areas. And, you know, the idea is this is kind of a little self-contained community that is highly amenitized, and people are really gonna enjoy living it. We had actually started with, with more units than this. As Jenny mentioned, 480 is what the current land use plan would allow. We're only 49 over that. The current zoning, MXR, would allow to go up to 672, which is 143 more than we're proposing. We did, we had a more intense plan initially, but we dropped 84 units off of that, and we think that this is more appropriate for the site. As a whole, you know, the development, and looking at the Flora development, is gonna provide this variety of housing types. And you're, and this is, this garden-style apartment dwelling is a housing type that you just don't have in Kuratac right now, and we think there's a, a strong need for it. And in fact, this board and the county commissioners amended the UDO just recently to specifically allow this type of development. we don't believe this is in conflict with any UDO provision. As Jenny said, we'll be providing a site-specific development plan at the next stage of approval. All UDO standards will be met. The increasing Moayak population really, and the increased cost of housing is really making it very beneficial to look at alternative housing types such as this. And this addresses a demonstrated community need. It will particularly be available to serve teachers, law enforcement personnel, you know, and other government people who have a more difficult time fighting suitable affordable housing in the area. Land, of course, to the east and south is currently being developed as a planned community, and this will serve as a transition between those residential uses and the commercial uses, more intense commercial uses to the north. So we believe it's compatible with the existing and surrounding land uses. It certainly is not gonna adversely impact nearby lands. We will be modeling and managing the stormwater to the 100-year storm event. Stormwater, there's gonna be central management in this whole facility. So all of the stormwater facilities, including what's currently being constructed for the single-family parks in this, will be managed by a management entity. As, you know, as a, as a whole, the, it's a logical and orderly development pattern. Really, it completes the, the development of this part of Survey Road. It doesn't create any significant adverse impacts on the environment, no wetland impacts. Vegetative buffers are being established to reduce visual and noise impact. We believe it will be adequately served by public facilities. Water and sewer will be available. Of course, the, the sewer moratorium will need to be lifted, and DEQ will need to be satisfied prior to the final approval for construction. And that really should be happening in the near, in the very near future. The street improvements are being made in accordance with the traffic engineer's recommendations. As Jenny indicated, the traffic impact is actually being reduced from what was proposed with the shopping center. And, you know, we are proposing this roundabout in connection with this, and that provides just a more direct connection to 168. And the way that came about is we, we had a major commercial user interested in the two-and-a-half-acre site out here, and they said it just wouldn't work with that existing access down Survey Road, which was gonna have, be restricted to a right in and out at the, at the south end. And so we came up with this idea in work, of making a connection here. And then in talking with the OT, they said they would be in favor of it if we included a roundabout in the design. And so that's, that's how that evolved. And we think it will really help traffic in this area as a whole. Will not, certainly not impact land, adversely impact land values. And I believe it's in the public interest and in harmony with the purpose and intent of the UDO. The first units will not be ready for occupancy until the following school year after the Tulsa Creek Elementary School is scheduled to open. And they were scheduling it over a six-year period.
So you said the phasing of this is over a six-year period?
Right. So doing a, basically a phase every two years, starting two years from, roughly two years from now, will be the first occupancy.
But none of this can start until that moratorium's lifted, correct?
Well, we can be working on
Paperwork.
Final design and permitting and a lot of state permitting to do and
Okay.
But like, building permits can't begin to
No, building permits would not be available until, until sometime next year, probably. Well, we wouldn't be ready to pull a building permit in for another year, probably.
Any questions for Mr. Bissel?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else that has signed up, come on forward. Name and address.
Evening. Steve Hedrick, 296 Summit Farms Trail, Moayak. We'll digress just a little bit a couple of years. August 21 of 2018, the community, community meeting was held at the library for the FOST tract. Saw the drawings. It looked great, fantastic. Really was behind it. It offered, you know, 22,000 square foot of neighborhood commercial, located street level, you know, apartments above. I thought, great for the community. You can have your own compacted area there. For whatever reason, that did not work out. So I just asked myself, okay, if not now, when? So then was, as we moved forward into the Flora tract, and in January of '22, at the Board of Commission, they asked to rezone that 21 acre, 21.99 acres to general business. So of course now everyone in the county is excited. We finally maybe get us another grocery I prefer to keep my money here as much as possible. So I, I do use our food line, and it's, it, as much as it tries to keep up, sometimes it just can't, it cannot. I would think that the commercial here would take a lot of pressure off them. It would, it would provide jobs for our citizens. I looked at tax records, food line says on 4.4 acres of ground. And, and that's just the food line. That's not including the, the, you know, the wing on the side there. Google search, looking for grocery stores that might fit the bill, the smaller commercial in the front of the Survey Road area was Aldi. They can do as small as 2.3 acres, but that's only 82 parking spots. That's not really gonna help the locals. I just feel that not having a commercial area here that was asked for originally does not really meet the needs of the entire community of Moayak. Just because we are tight, we, we get 30, 50,000 cars come through here every year, right now 168 past our food line. That's a lot of people to be, to be buying groceries. So my only thing would be to say, if not now, when? Thank you.
Okay, good point. Anyone else that has signed to speak?
I had signed up.
Go ahead, and you can just tell me your name and address.
Justin Oldwood, 131 Spring Lane, Moayak, North Carolina.
Okay.
I'll speak a little bit to the commercial and kind of the historical timeline of how that has more, like this gentleman said. You know, we're, we're bound to a lot of restrictions and regulations and different things from a standpoint of the consumer, or the, the commercial realtors and who they bring to us. So first and foremost, where this parcel is, is being planned was a separate, as Jenny said, a separate approval in a conditional zoning case for commercial. We had it slated, you can't get to the next step with these commercial guys till you have a zoning in place. They're not gonna put an LOI up or a contract on a parcel of land that isn't designated for the use that they want. So that was the step one of why the previous plan had the commercial layout. We have been working with two regional, or large tenants, grocery tenants. They had, after we got the approval, we were going to the next step with them, and as they were doing their due diligence, the, the, the major highway in Survey Road posed a problem with visibility in the posed a problem with visibility in the future and some other things that that parcel just didn't fit the bill for them. They're very strict in what they want. So we kind of scrapped that plan, went to this plan. In the interim concurrently, we put a contract on a parcel of land directly adjacent, or across from the middle school here, that's right at 23 acres. And we took that exact plan and we have now put it on that. And we're working with those same grocery retailers to try to get them on board on that, now that it's on the major highway. So they wouldn't take us to the next step to go to contractor LOI with the commercial on this because Survey Road posed a huge problem for traffic form and visibility in the future. As Moyoc grows, between Survey and the highway, as all these houses are coming on, will also grow. And that was a major concern. So, you know, it's not like we're moving, we're moving it because we're looking at a move-in target. It's not that we're putting it here just to move it. We put it there, went through a $200,000 expense to be told that they didn't like that location. We just put a multimillion-dollar contract on another piece of land adjacent from this on the highway that we think will check all their boxes. So it's not a bait and switch. Or, and we understand how the food line is, I mean, I go to that thing every night, unfortunately. So that's kind of the long and short of how it's evolved from FOST, like you said, with up to 20,000 square foot. Under apartments will retail under, Moyoc's unfortunately not ready for it yet, and we had a lot of pushback. So we moved it to this, where we thought was a better play. We got that through the process. And again, it didn't check all the boxes for those Harris Teeters, Publix, and those major retailers. So we put a contract on a piece, we actively have a contract on a piece across Survey Road from this that is sandwiched between Survey Road and the highway. And we have taken this, basically, pretty much this exact plan, right? I mean, not the one you see on, but the commercial plan, and put it on that. And we're working through the studies with them now. I mean, that's just the real estate game. Mr. Ennis has been in it a long time. He can tell you probably more than, he's probably forgotten more than I know. So that's just the name of the game. And that's the, again, the long and short of how the commercial has morphed into what it is. So, and again, like Mark said, the ordinance just changed to allow a use like this. And we think, I mean, Moyoc needs something that people can actually afford. I mean, the housing has gotten ridiculous. And, you know, this product is something we haven't seen. And I think it'll be very successful and the location is fitting for it, so.
Yeah, how many bedrooms will each of these apartments be?
Typically, they're two to three.
Two to three?
Yeah, yeah, you probably have some ones in there. And that's, you know, once we get the zoning in place, I mean, it's hard to do anything on a piece of land that's not there. Nobody will talk to you. You know, we can't run certain metrics and stuff like that. But I mean, it would be a mix between one, two, and three, mainly two and three.
What's a garden apartment? What is that?
Smaller, these are 18 units, yeah, only 18 units per block.
Not like a high-rise?
So they're not like these huge
Not a high-rise or anything?
Yeah, 60 unit buildings.
It's not that the unit's smaller, it's that the number of units.
The number of units per pad are a lot smaller, a little more, you know. And it just allows, like you said, it gives you the ability to do more amenities and keep it more communal in there.
Okay.
All right.
But what about the grocery shortage? I mean, I'm hearing that, it didn't go away with you talking about 23 acres and putting a store there. If, I mean, is it the possibility you could actually be building and people could be buying these and you're still trying to work off the one food line? Is there, I mean, is that
Yeah, I mean, that's private enterprise, yeah. I mean, there's nothing, you know, we're doing our best. Like I said, I live here locally and I understand.
So do you feel, being a local to it, and using that food line, that they are having a hard time keeping up?
I mean, I can say for my, I haven't ever gone in there and not gotten anything I needed. But that's me personally. I mean, is there a lot of people, that food line is one of the most productive food lines there is on the East Coast. I mean, you can attribute that to a lot of seasonal traffic, the higher demand, you know, for more residents. I mean, I, again, I don't, I don't know what their inventory is. I can tell you, every time my wife sent me up there, I've got what I've needed. That's what I can base my professional opinion on.
It's just interesting, I've never heard of this facet of it. It's like, you know, you've heard about our schools, the capacity of sewage and water, you know, the highway, but I've never heard of not having enough food if you add more people than you do groceries.
That's not, I mean, in my opinion, that's not a real threat. We deal with some very, very rapidable, some of our partners are the Venture Group. They do every Harris Teeter, they do every Walgreens, they do all the Walmarts, Home Depots. I mean, and, you know, it's, this area, as busy as people think it is, unfortunately, the algorithm is very tight to bring another grocery store. And it's been a fight. And like I said, I wish it was as easy as people thought. But that's, you know, it's unfortunate it's not. I mean, the stars have to align, and that's why we're chasing properties to try to make it happen. I mean, that's, we're doing everything we can from, you know, putting contracts on property they like to doing plans, getting it through zoning, so.
See, Tom's a Carova guy, so you have to explain.
I live in the sand.
Yeah, he's a sand guy, so. Okay, any more questions?
That's my little spiel.
All right.
Appreciate y'all's time.
But you know, also, as you get, as the word residential development gets built, as you get more rooftops, then these sites become more and more attractive to the big commercial developers.
Yeah, it goes the other way too, yeah.
One thing I didn't go over that I meant to was the, they talk about the building design itself. You know, we've got it laid out so that these building entrances will be facing the surrounding streets. And they're all going to have, you know, hardy siding and architectural shingles and full stone, a mix of full stone and stone-water table design and low-e windows and doors, PVC trim, and all those kinds of things. So these are going to be, you know, well-built and, you know, attractive buildings. Glad to answer any other questions.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Bissel? Hearing none, any discussion between board members? Hearing none, I'm going to open the floor for a motion. And everyone has their cheat sheets, right? Fair motion. Brian, you got yours?
Somewhere.
He'll give you a call.
I move to approve PB 24-19 Flora Farm conditional rezoning because the request is in conformance with general purpose and intent of the unified development ordinance and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Kuratac 2040 Vision Plan, including land use goal one. And the request is reasonable in the public interest because the size and location of the property is appropriate for the proposed use. And the request provides a needed housing alternative in the Moyoc sub-area of the northern mainland. And the TRC review comments and applicants agreed upon conditions of approval in the staff report shall become conditions of approval.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And me, David and myself, yeah. Okay, motion passes, on to announcements. Any announcements?
Yes, you may notice we have a new staff person in the audience.
Well, that's who that is.
Melissa Ott, she's our planner too. She has some experience with New Hanover County. She is a graduate of East Carolina and she's currently working on her NPA. So she's a go-getter and we're excited to have her. So make sure you introduce yourself to Melissa.
All right, what department?
Our department.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to let the board know, Don Holler's text amendment, he's the gentleman that was bringing forward the multifamily text amendment and some changes to multifamily design standards as well as some other commercial and community compatibility standards in Corolla. His text, there was a work session with the Board of Commissioners where they discussed his amendment. And that will be scheduled for the Board at the September 16 Commissioners Meeting.
That's the saga.
Well, it's the
Because of the saga.
Yeah, then just, yes, yes. So Mr. Holler's text amendment will be heard by the Board. And that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Neams, anything for us? Okay, all right, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.